O Jesus, eu desejo ser perfeito. Eu quero-te para sempre, que me abraças. Despejei todos os obstáculos, despejei todos os obstáculos. Agueixa-me, e tu serás mais amarelo do que o chão. Mais amarelo do que o chão, sim, mais amarelo do que o chão. Agueixa-me, e tu serás mais amarelo do que o chão.
O Jesus, por isso, eu sou muito entusiasmado. Espero, bendito Senhor, em teus pés crucificados. Por fé, pelo meu limão, vejo o teu sangue fluir. Agueixa-me, e tu serás mais amarelo do que o chão. Mais amarelo do que o chão, sim, mais amarelo do que o chão. Agueixa-me, e tu serás mais amarelo do que o chão.
O Jesus, o meu amor, eu espero paciamente. Venha agora, e dentro de mim, um novo coração crie. Para aqueles que me conhecem, nunca disseram não. Agueixa-me, e tu serás mais amarelo do que o chão. Mais amarelo do que o chão, sim, mais amarelo do que o chão. Agueixa-me, e tu serás mais amarelo do que o chão. Quando a paz como uma árvore atende minha caminho. Quando as lágrimas como bolas marinas rocam. Qualquer coisa que me Deus tenha ensinado a dizer. Está bem, está bem, com meu coração.
Está bem, está bem, com meu coração.
Com meu coração. Está bem, está bem, com meu coração. Meu pecado, oh, o sorriso deste glorioso Senhor. Meu pecado não em carne, mas em cor. Meu pecado à cruz, e eu não o guardarei mais. Agradeça o Senhor, agradeça o Senhor, oh, meu coração.
Está bem, está bem, com meu coração.
Com meu coração. Está bem, está bem, com meu coração. E, Senhor, é o dia em que a fé será vista. As nuvens serão levadas como uma escala. O Trono ressuscitará, e o Senhor desaparecerá. Mesmo assim, está bem, com meu coração.
Está bem, está bem, com meu coração.
Com meu coração. Está bem, está bem, com meu coração. Quando caminhamos com o Senhor, no光亮de Sua palavra. Mas a glória que Ele esfuma-nos. Deixe-nos seguir Sua boa vontade. Ele permanece ainda comnos. E aqueles que trustarão e obedecerão. Trustem e obedecem, pois não há outra maneira. De ser feliz em Jesus, do que trustar e obedecer. Não a pena que pagamos, não a lágrima que partilhamos. Mas a nossa fé, a nossa riqueza que devemos. Não a pena de sofrer ou de morte, não a pena de chorar ou de crer. Mas é melhor se trustarmos e obedecermos. Trustem e obedecem, pois não há outra maneira. De ser feliz em Jesus, do que trustarmos e obedecer. Mas nunca podemos provar o deleite de Sua bondade. Até que o altar de todos nós sejamos. Porque o favor que Ele mostra, e a alegria que Ele prestou. São para aqueles que trustam e obedecem. Trustem e obedecem, pois não há outra maneira. De ser feliz em Jesus, do que trustarmos e obedecer.
Senhor, como um shepherds, nos conduz. Muito precisamos de teu cuidado. Nos conduz aos pastores agradáveis. Porque a nossa usagem é teu. Bendito Jesus, bendito Jesus. Tu nos criaste, e somos nós. Bendito Jesus, bendito Jesus. Tu nos criaste, e somos nós.
Somos teus, e teus amigos. Nós salvamos e cuidamos de ti. Segue a tua fuga da mágoa, defende-nos. Busca-nos quando nos andamos mal. Bendito Jesus, bendito Jesus. Nós ouvimos-nos quando rezamos. Bendito Jesus, bendito Jesus. Nós ouvimos-nos quando rezamos.
Bem, venhamos a buscar o teu favor. Bem, venhamos a seguir a tua vontade. Bendito Senhor, e único Senhor. Com o teu amor, o teu espírito. Bendito Jesus, bendito Jesus. Tu nos amaste ainda comnos. Bendito Jesus, bendito Jesus. Tu nos amaste ainda comnos.
Eu venho ao jardim sozinha, enquanto o frio ainda é dos rosas. E o som que ouço, caindo em meu ouvido. O Filho de Deus se desvanece.
E ele camina comigo, e ele conversa comigo. E diz-me que sou seu. E a alegria que partilhamos, enquanto o trazemos lá. Ninguém mais jamais conheceu.
Ele fala, e o som de sua voz é tão suave. Os pássaros estão cantando. E a melodia que Ele me deu. Dentro do meu coração está sonando.
E ele camina comigo, e ele conversa comigo. E diz-me que sou seu. E a alegria que partilhamos, enquanto o trazemos lá. Ninguém mais jamais conheceu. E ainda no jardim com ele. A noite que me rodeia cai. Mas Ele me pede que vá através do som de amor. Seu som para mim está gritando. E ele camina comigo, e ele conversa comigo. E diz-me que sou seu. E a alegria que partilhamos, enquanto o trazemos lá. Ninguém mais jamais conheceu.
Cabeçalos de séculos, escova comigo. Deixe-me esconder-me em ti. Deixe o água e o sangue, do teu sangue, que me fluyam. Sejam de pecado o cura do duplo. Salve da raiva, e faça-me pura. Não os lábios das minhas mãos. Sempre feito o teu amor. Estes que pecaram não poderiam ser perdidos. Tu deves salvá-los, e tu sozinho. Em minha mão, o preço que trago. Simplesmente, a verdade, a minha cruz, eu adianto.
Enquanto meu coração está sangrando. Quando minha vida se acaba. Quando eu subo a um mundo desconhecido. E olhe-me sobre o meu trono. Cabeçalos de séculos, escova comigo. Deixe-me esconder-me em ti.
...
Amen. Thank you choir for these two beautiful selections. Amen, a job well done, that's for sure, and we praise God. Amen for every voice. I just want to take a moment to say that my wife and I, we are happy and excited to be in Toronto. One more time, and we've been looking forward to these special meetings. Wednesday night, in the middle of a work week, I'm not sure how that works for all of our folks here in Toronto. But we pray that God will help us all. And amen, and those who are here tonight, we are grateful and thankful to God that you are here. So God bless all of the Toronto brethren for hosting these meetings and amen preparing for these special meetings. So I want to thank the Lord as well for a good contingent of ministers that we have with us. Of course, some of these are coming from a long distance. So we have on my right Pastor Grant, who is retired Pastor Grant Castle. Would you stand please? And his wife Sister Jones should be right over here, you want to stand up? Okay, amen. And we have Brother Kirby, who is my brother, and his wife Sister Diane. And they are ministering in Inglee. And then we have Brother Michael Ivany and his wife Sister Bonnie, right over here. And Brother Michael is the pastor at our Rottetown Ed Porter's Church. And then we have Brother Edith, of course you know him. Brother Edith and his wife Comfort, where are you Comfort? Sister Comfort, she's back here, okay. Amen, so they minister the word of God here in Kitchener along with Brother Toby. And of course, we have Brother Randy and Sister Jean. Sister Jean, where are you? Sister Jean, Brother Randy, amen, they pastor our bide-armed church in Newfoundland. And over to my left, we have Sister Lisa and Brother Robert. Would you stand please? And they are pastoring our church in Kitchener. And then we have Brother Howard Cannon, he's been here many times. Sister Sharon, and they are pastoring our church in Fort McMurray. And then of course, we have Brother Toby, amen, the pastor here in Toronto along with his wife Sister Tosin. So God bless you. So Sister Tosin, where are you? Okay, Brother Toby, Sister Tosin, for those who might not have met them. Okay, God bless you, and we have Sister Mary, Sister Mary For Solo, from our church in Calgary. And she just arrived, a little bit late, but she is joining us. And as the week progresses, she will join us here up front. So actually, we had a chair right over here for her. So it's entirely up to her, if she wants to come up and go there, or you can remain where you are, entirely up to you. But anyway, your chair is there. As well, I do want to take a moment to bring greetings from our district headquarters church at Rottetown. And of course, and as well from the board of directors. Reverend Rinny Castle, Pastor George Burton, Pastor Benzo Quinlan, and myself, of course. We are the board of directors, so I want to bring greetings on the behalf of our board members. And of course, we will be having others who will be joining us as the week progresses. So God bless you everyone, and thank you for hosting us. And right now, I will turn it over to Brother Toby.
Good evening, everyone, and warm welcome. Thank you for honoring our invitation to be part of these special meetings. And we're sure that God will bless each and every one of us, especially in Jesus' name. We'll start by singing from a hymnal, hymn 430, says, "There shall be showers of blessing." And you know, God has already showered His rain, which is confirmation that we are all set for showers. And so we'll sing all verses 1, 2, 3, 4 after the introduction. There shall be showers of blessings this season. Amen, and those showers we will have tonight, in Jesus' name. We want to sing another song, 434, says, "Revive Us Again." Amen, that's the theme of the special meeting, we want revival in every area of our life. So we're going to sing this song heartily with praise now, and we'll sing all verses 1, 2, 3, 4 after the introduction. We praise thee, O God, with all our hearts. Amen, we'll do one song, and then I'll hand it over to Reverend Randy Antalon, 337, "Nothing But The Blood." "Nothing But The Blood," says, "What can wash away my sins? Nothing but the blood of Jesus." Says, "What can make me whole again? Nothing but the blood of Jesus." "Oh, precious is the flow that makes me white as snow. No other fount I know, nothing but the blood of Jesus." As many as are here this evening and have not applied the blood, that blood is very available to you. Right there on your seat, you can plead the blood, and it will wash away any challenge you have. And amen, we'll sing all verses 1, 2, 3, 4, and then Reverend Antalon will come lead the remaining two songs before we have the congregational prayer.
Greetings from our church in Fireham, Newfoundland, which and every one of you. My wife and I are happy to be back here in Toronto for these special meetings. We definitely miss you all, and we thank God, I see new faces, but I see, you know, a lot of familiar faces as well. And we thank God, and you know, I'm in tears, actually, just listening to the special this evening. You did a very good job, God bless you all. And just to be, you know, say that be part of this congregation here. It's just, you know, me and my wife, that's a special spot in our heart for this church, definitely. And it will stay there, and we thank God. Thank you for the love. You know, we led this church for six years, and look, you know, I was just thinking today. We started in this place eight years ago now. Because with the bird of the pastor in here, it's almost been a year. So overall, we've been here for eight years, and the growth of this church is just, you know, and to God be the glory for that. Nothing that we can take, none of us. I know our district superintendent Reverend Christopher, you won't even take anything from that. Although he initiated almost everything when he was pastoring in Kitchener. But you know, everything is for the glory of God, we thank God for that. For the continuation of our singing, that's a little bit of break, eh? I mean, I was singing, and I think everyone is just up here now, trying to sing very well. I'll try my best to be as good as Fred and Toby in leading the song. Song number is 438, so that's the last song, 438. "Jesus saves, we have heard the joyful sound. Jesus saves, Jesus saves. Spread the tidies all around, Jesus saves, Jesus saves. Bear the news to every land, blound the streets and cross the waves. Onward, kiss our Lord's command. Jesus saves, Jesus saves." We're singing all four verses of the song after we get down. Amen. Amen. Song before prayer is 489. "Pass me not, O gentle Savior, hear my humble cry. While on others thou art calling, do not pass me by. Savior, Savior, hear my humble cry. While on others thou art calling, do not pass me by." Let's sing all four verses of the song in the third verse will stand for prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord. If we have another privilege, God, to be found in your house, Lord. We ask, oh God, tonight, Lord, that you have blessed this congregation, Lord. That each one of us, Lord, would have our minds made up, Lord. That we've come out to those meetings, God, expecting something, Lord. Help us to reach out and touch you in faith, knowing, Lord, that when you speak, mountains move, Lord. When you speak, God, rivers become crossable, Lord. Help us, God, to cast our care upon you, Lord. And as we begin those special meetings, Lord, we ask that your Spirit would come down, Lord, and anoint each one of us, Lord. Anoint us, oh God, with your Spirit and with your power and with your glory. God, that hearts will be sanctified, Lord. That souls will be baptized with the Holy Ghost, Lord. That sick bodies will be healed, God, and should you tarry, Lord. And we come to the close of those meetings, Lord, we will be able to say it was good for us, Lord, to be here, Lord. We give you the praise and the glory, Lord, knowing that you are very present helping trouble, Lord. Go with us through this service, Lord. We pray that you anoint the lips of clay, God, as the message goes forward. That it will be meat and drink to our hungry souls, Lord. We give you the praise and the glory, knowing, Lord, that you are with us, Lord. That your Spirit is with us. We just want to reach out in faith, Lord. We want to touch the end of your garment, Lord. Just have your way, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Once again, a very warm welcome to each and every one of us for taking the time to be part of this special meeting here in Toronto. We thank God for granting journey mercies for all those who travel from far and wide. Thank you very much for coming. We do appreciate you and we pray that our God will bless you abundantly, in Jesus' name. We do not take it lightly because we could have been anywhere else, but you chose to be part of us tonight. So thank you so much, and we pray that God will bless you super abundantly, in Jesus' name. And the purpose, what we are here is for revival. So you brought the revival and God will bless each and every one of us. You spend time and resources and we pray that our good Lord will replenish abundantly, in Jesus' name. And for our friends who are joining virtually, this is the Apostolate Faith here in Toronto. We are part of an international organization with our international headquarters in Fortland, Oregon, and our Canadian headquarters in Newfoundland. And because this evening, we have very, very senior ministers. We have our district superintendent, Reverend Christopher Hillel, here with us, and members of other senior ministers from other pastors from other churches. Reverend Hillel had done that introduction earlier on, so I would not go ahead and do that again. But we just want to let you know that this is the Toronto Church and we are located at number 8 Templar Drive. And we fellowship here every Sunday. We're here from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Sunday school starts at 9:00 AM and we have our devotion service from 10:30. However, during the course of this week, we have special meetings, and so the schedule is slightly changed. And so tomorrow, by the grace of God, as we're having here, we will gather here again at 7:30 PM for another special service. And the same thing will happen, by the grace of God, on Friday, 7:30. So we want you, we all invite you all, that you please come and be very punctual. And we are sure that God will bless you abundantly. You know, it's very relative. You determine what the blessings you go with, you know. If you come with a bucket, you go with a bucket of blessing. If you come with a trailer load, a trailer, you go with a trailer load of blessing. So it's all, the ball is squarely in your court. You know, by the grace of God, we have been praying the past week that God will bless this meeting. And, you know, he assured us in a very unique way. And while we were setting up yesterday, we were talking and said, oh, the weather was really very hot. You know, we said, oh, if we put on this fan, it was just going to bring down the heat. And you know what happened this morning? Who noticed? Rain. And how does the weather feel? Warm or cooler, right? And so we're sure that God has started changing things in our favor. And so if you believe, you know, you will see the glory of God. You know, if you believe, you will see the glory of God. So I assure you, as you're right there on your seat, start talking to God. Start asking him, you know. We will go into testimony and you hear testimonies, but by the grace of God, I wasn't sitting down in church when I got saved. I was in a car on my way to camp meeting and I got saved. So that tells you that God is omnipotent, omnipresent, and he can meet at any point in time. And so if you're ready, he's ready. The ball is squarely in your court. God will bless you tonight, in Jesus' name. Again, by the grace of God, on Sunday, we would have Sunday school here. However, take note of the time change, 10:00 AM. And then by the grace of God, 11:30 AM, we would have the morning devotion service also in this auditorium. So please be punctual, come in as early as possible. From 9:00 o'clock, by the grace of God, we'll be here to start bringing down the power of God. So come join us and we're sure that our God will bless you abundantly, in Jesus' name. And again, in the evening, by the grace of God, 7:30 PM, we'll head over to our Kitchener Church, you know, to wrap up this special meeting. So we want to encourage each and every one of us to ensure endeavor to be part of that special meeting. Kitchener is about 45 minutes, one hour, depending on who is driving and then the traffic. So, you know, we want to encourage us to ensure that at least be part of that fellowship and to wrap it up. We have Reverend from Kitchener and then Pastor Mike and his wife, Lisa, and Reverend from Kitchener. So it would be nice for us again to be part of that fellowship and also see the Ashubon people and the Atos also from Kitchener. And a lot of other friends. So we do want to be part of that tomorrow, on Sunday evening. So please ensure endeavor to make arrangements to be part of that service. In condition of our service, after this announcement, the choir will give us a song. It's titled "The Old Time Fire." Don't we want that? The old time flame, yes. We want God to bless in the old time way. You know, there's a lot of trouble in our world, but in the old time, when the spirit of God falls, there's always a change. And after that song, there's opportunity for testimonies. So let's not be shy. Let's stand up and testify and share what God has done for you. You know, testimonies is our opportunity to tell others what Jesus has done for you. It's an opportunity for you to also encourage somebody. You know, you never know what anyone else is going through. What may be a mountain to somebody, maybe some, a challenge you have overcome. So when you stand up and testify, you encourage somebody and that individual can go down his knees and say, "God, you helped brother so, so, so." And Mike is not going to be an exception. So let's not hold back our testimony. Let's stand up, let's shout praise to God for what he has done for us. And after that testimony, we will have a special song. Sister Norma is going to sing a song, "I'm Free." Amen? "I'm free." That's why we are here. You know, that's why we have special meetings, so that we can be free of seeing of whatever challenges we have. We all gather on the altar and Jesus will set us free. So after that special solo, we'll have Reverend Christopher Hillel bring the work. And so now we hand it over to the choir who will sing "The Old Time Fire," and then the floor is open for testimony. God bless you.
For the cross and for the, we're worthy to a land that was slain for me. He did it for me. He did it for you. He didn't have to, but I'm so thankful that he did, you know. I want to do what the Lord wants me to do. I want to be faithful. You know, God has been so good to me. You know, I went back over five years ago and we were in Biderham on a Thursday evening, you know, and we got a phone call about our grandson Jackson, you know, who was having seizures. You know, he still had seizures today, but I still thank the Lord. I still have something to thank the Lord for. His blessings has been so many, I couldn't stand there and tell you. You know, I still have a song in my heart for the Lord because he's done so much, you know. Just a couple of months ago, we had another phone call about our baby girl, you know. She's 31, but she's still my baby girl, you know, something's not right. But I know that God is there. I know he knows the need. He's heard that prayer and he's heard so many other prayers, you know. I have affliction on my body and the Lord knows about that. So I still want to praise him in the midst of the storms, you know, in the valley. I want to thank the Lord because he's so good to me. On the mountaintop, I still want to praise my Lord, you know. He saved me from a lot in life, you know. I was going down a dark path, you know, and the Lord brought me to him. I didn't go looking for him, but I'm so glad he came looking for me. He knew just what I needed, what road my life would go and travel, where I would travel. I was so thankful. I just love him. I wouldn't want to be found anywhere else tonight, you know. When the letter came through about us coming here to Trotter, you know, I really wanted to come and I'm so thankful. That's the Lord. I want to praise him. I just love him. Where else could I go but to the Lord? You know, many times when I'm on my knees, I say, "Where could I go but to you, Lord? Whom else could I depend upon?" Like I depend upon the Lord and I depend upon him. Every day of my life, I depend upon the Lord. I just want to praise him. I'm so happy to see you all here tonight. God is so good. I just love each and every one. Nothing in my heart against anybody, and that's the goodness of the Lord.
Me and my husband to be in this gospel today. 13 years ago, I asked her if she wants to come here in Canada. And the first thing she asked me is, "Is there any church there in Canada?" And at that time, we don't have yet. And I said, "Oh, yes, there's one, but in Kitchener it takes like almost two hours, more than an hour to drive. But if you're willing to come, I'm going to drive you." But when my mom's papers was processed, it took five years. So when everything was done and her visa was granted, it was April 10, 2010. And the following day is April 11. That's the time that we started the Toronto Church here in Canada. And like, "Oh, if it's not for mom, I'm not going to be here and my husband today." So eight years ago, every time I see Kitchener family, they have a special place in my heart because that's where I received my miracle. And until then, my journey with him is amazing. I am a warrior myself. I worry everything. But since the blood of Jesus washed away my sin, I'm free. I don't worry anything because I know that I have God who's going to, he has my back. And I thank God for that. He's our provider. He's our sustenance. He's my driver. He's my keeper. He's my all and all. And like, I thought, "Oh, we don't have this." But you thought, "The door is already closed, but here comes. He's going to open all your windows." That's the blessing that we receive. I receive since I receive him as my Savior and I couldn't thank him. And I even... And I even remember my husband said, "Oh, I wish God were gonna come now." Because I know that the nearly his coming, the war that surrounds us is going to be wicked, wicked. And we hope and pray that we're not going to give in to temptation, right? So who wants, who wants not to see him now when we're all ready? And I thank God for everything that he's done for my life. And I hope and I pray that we could see him face to face.
You know, I'm so thankful for what the Lord have done for me and where he have brought me from. You know, just walking up there and seeing all the ministers, seeing Brother Michael and Brother Kirby and Pastor Robert and Sister Lisa and Brother Grant, you know, brought me right back home. You know, I'm so thankful that I had a praying mom that took the time out to pray for me, you know. At a very young age, I got into a lot of drugs and drinking, but you know what? At age of twenty-six, I found myself in church in Rottington and I give my heart to the Lord. You know, my life took on a new meaning after that. You know, I haven't always been perfect, but I serve a perfect Savior. God have always been there. You know, many times I've seen, I've been in tunnels and the light have been pretty dull. But you know, the Lord have always helped me through. You know, here for a while, you know, before I moved to Ontario, I was going through a little situation where I felt like, you know, I didn't want to go to church no more. And I was pretty discouraged. You know, Uncle Melvin came up. We came up to the house there and sat down and he started talking about evenings and started talking about God. And you know, I could feel the spirit as it start to come around the table. You know, I, I wanted to get up from the table and walk away, but the Holy Spirit kept me on my seat. You know, something happened to me that day that changed my life forever. You know, I've never, ever been discouraged since then. You know, God have put this desire within my heart to serve the Lord, you know. And you know, I'm so happy that I can be found here. And my wife is here playing piano and my little son, you know, and my daughter, you know, God have really blessed me. You know, I'm so thankful for what he have done, you know. It could have been different. You know, I know a lot of friends of mine that have went out into lost eternity. You know, I'm so thankful that God had mercy upon me. You know, I'm so glad that I'm here tonight and when he comes, I want to see him.
Amen. Thank him for first of all, saving me. Um, I want to thank him for all he's done for me. I want to thank him for putting me in a good home. I want to thank him for giving me a loving family and a good family in the church too. Um, I want to thank him for also providing for me and even going beyond that and giving me blessings. Um, then other than that, I want to thank the Lord for protection. I want to thank him for helping my dad and healing him. Um, my dad got in, what, two car accidents last year. I want to thank him for taking him out of those unscathed. Um, he's in Nigeria right now. Um, I want to pray for his coming back home. I hope he's safe when he comes home and I, I just thank the Lord for all he's done for me.
I want to thank God this evening because God is great. Um, I was born into this gospel, but that never made me a Christian. But I thank God that God's, at God's own time, he cornered me home. And how I got saved, it was not in the church that I was preparing for work. And I got into the restroom, then the whole atmosphere changed. I knew it was the spirit of God that came down himself. And he reminded me of every teaching during Sunday when I was in children's hall as elementary child in, in the church. So immediately, something just pushed me, I went on the floor, I prayed. There and there with nobody assisting me, God came down himself, he saved me, he sanctified me, he filled me with the Holy Ghost. Um, you know, there's something that happened after God, after getting converted. Um, my academic performance was very poor. I'm that kind of person that I can't stand in front of the crowd. But immediately God saved me, there was deliverance. He delivered me from dull brain, I became brilliant. He also delivered me from, from shyness. I became the, the kind of person that can stand in front of everybody. I give God glory, I give him praises. I know it's a long journey and it's been difficult, but I know God is there with me. Children of God, please pray, pray along with me that God will see me through. And when I get to heaven, we all see ourself.
We'll do one more song and then we'll have Sister Shewa and then Norma will do the solo. So we'll sing number, even number eighteen. Let's just praise the Lord. I, I do know we know it, and Sister Shewa, and then Norma will do the solo. And then we'll have the watered in salt station. Let's just praise the Lord. Let's just praise.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I thank God for saving my soul. He saved me when I was a teenager and I'm so grateful to him. Because you know, anywhere I am now, in the midst, once I'm in the midst of children, wherever I am in the world, it feels like home. I thank God. I'm just two weeks here, but when I came to church, I just felt like I was at home. And I just felt, you know, just because I'm in the midst of the children of God, it feels, it feels like home. I'm so grateful to God. Shortly before I came to Nigeria, my dad was very sick. In fact, his oxygen saturation level dropped as low as twenty-seven. You know, the normal range should have been between ninety-five and hundred. And if, in fact, it's considered abnormal when it falls to eighty. It's gonna actually affect the brain. But you know, God revived him. All hope was almost lost, but God brought him back to life. And today he's radiant. I thank God, the rest of my life I give to him.
Amen, amen. Thank you, Sister Norma, for that beautiful selection. And it's good to feel free. Amen. When the Spirit says free is free indeed. We thank God that we can have freedom, amen, in this house tonight. We can have freedom of spirit and freedom in our souls and freedom to give God worship and praise. Amen, amen. If you don't feel free, amen. I believe God wants you to feel free. Amen, for we are his children. Amen, amen. Uh, let's turn in our bibles to Psalm eighty-five. Psalm eighty-five, beginning to read at verse six. The title of my message is, "Ready for Revival." Amen. Psalm eighty-five, verse six. "Welt thou not revive us again? That thy people may rejoice in thee? Show us thy mercy, O Lord, and grant us thy salvation. I will hear what God, the Lord, will speak; for he will speak peace unto his people and to his saints. But let them not turn again to folly." Verse eleven. "Truth shall spring out of the earth, and righteousness shall look down from heaven. Yea, the Lord shall give that which is good, and our land shall yield or increase. Righteousness shall go before him and shall sit us in the way of his steps." Amen. "Welt thou revive us again?" It is right for God's people to pray that he might revive them. Salvation and spiritual life are dependent upon God imparting upon his people, upon us here even tonight, his mercy and his grace and his forgiveness and his truth. Praise the Lord. We are, I don't know where you are in your spiritual experience with God, but even when we are at a low point and not experiencing God's blessings as God intended, then we should honestly confess our most inner needs and pray to God in heaven that he might revive us again. Amen. Let us, who are here tonight, surrender everything to God. If there is something that is holding you back, amen, surrender it upon the altars of God even tonight. Amen. And pray that God will revive you, revive us again. Praise the Lord. I want to ask you a question. The theme of these services I brought along, I believe I did, yes. You have seen this bulletin since the. Well, it is well done. And his theme that he had selected, revive thy work, O Lord, in the midst of the years. Remember mercy. God is a good guy. The question that I want to pose to you tonight. Are you, are we serious in saying we want revival? We may acknowledge that we need one, but do we really want revival? Amen? If the answer is yes, then we must consider, what will it take? for us to have revival in Toronto, in our Toronto church? What will it take to have revival in our Kitchener church? What will it take to have revival in all of the apostolic faith churches across Canada? Number one, we must be an obedient people. Number two, we must be a humble people. Number three, we must be a praying people. Number four, a people that is waiting upon God. They that wait upon the Lord, he shall renew their strength. They shall mount upon wings as he goes. They shall run and not be weary. They shall walk and not faint. Teach us, Lord, teach us, Lord, to wait. Are we waiting upon God? Are we expecting revival? Am I expecting revival in my soul? Are you expecting revival in your spirit? Are you expecting revival, amen, in this church? Amen. The psalmist was asking God to revive His people. He says, "Welt thou revive us again, that thy people may rejoice." That thy people may rejoice. When a people of God are revived, it brings rejoicing. It brings joy into the camp. One may be spiritually dying, or one may be spiritually dead, or faint, or feeble, or discouraging. Amen, but the psalmist says here, amen, in reference to His people, and he says, "Welt thou," amen, "not revive us again, that my people may rejoice." Amen. God is able to revive you. God is able to revive me. God is able to revive His church. Amen. God, I believe that even in these meetings, that God wants to pour out of His Spirit. He wants to pour out of His blessing. God wants to give to you a fresh anointing, a fresh touch, amen, of His love, a fresh touch, amen, of His fire, a fresh touch, amen, of His power. Amen, amen, we are living in the lattering time, in the lattering gospel. We are recipients, amen, of this marvelous gospel. It is still the same. Amen, amen, in the same old way. We sing it sometime, in the same old way, amen. I remember how it was forty-five years ago when I came to Jesus Christ for my salvation, and I've seen young people and young couples, and I've seen so many come to the altars of God. Amen, and God was saving souls and sanctifying and baptizing with the Holy Ghost and power. Amen, but God is still the same God. Amen, and God wants to do it for you and for me even tonight. What is revival? What is revival? Revival is restoration to life. It is a reawakening, amen, of our senses. It is a reawakening of our interests, amen, our love for God and our love for the truth and our love to go deeper with God. Revival is a stirring. Amen. Do you feel it? Do you have it? Do you desire it? Amen, are you willing to pray and seek God, amen, until, amen, your spirit is revived in such a way, amen, you want to leave this place, amen, and be a testimony in your home, on the job, amen, those who cross your path, amen. It's a stirring. We sing it sometime, a stirring in the Moby retreat. Hallelujah. It's a renewal, amen, of God's Spirit in the hearts of the saints of God. A person needing revival is something like a match. It is dead. It is lifeless until it is ignited, until it is lit. Revival does that for the Christian, for the children of God. It lights up our life, amen. It lights up our spiritual life, amen. Again, with joy, we draw from the waters of salvation. It is good to go back there, isn't it? Amen. To drink of that life-giving water, amen, to have our spirit, amen, that fire rekindled. Hallelujah. Amen. I'm going to read some verses here from Joel, chapter two. Beginning to read a verse twelve. "Therefore also now saith the Lord, 'Turn ye even to me with all your heart, and with fasting, and weeping, and with mourning, and rend your heart and not your garments; and turn unto the Lord your God; for he is gracious and merciful, slow to anger, and of great kindness, and repenteth am of evil. Who knoweth if he will return and repent and leave a blessing behind him.'" Amen. God told the people to turn to him while there was still time. Time was running out. Judgment was hanging over the nation. Destruction would soon be upon them. And we are living, though we are in the dispensation of grace, but we are living in a late hour. Brothers and sisters, time is running out. We don't know when our lives will end, or we don't know, amen, the hour, the moment in which the Lord will return, amen, to take His bride out of the earth. Therefore we should not allow anything to hold us back from turning our lives completely over to God. Who knows? These special meetings here in Toronto might be the last special meetings in Toronto. Do you want restoration? Do you want revival? Amen. Is it your desire to see your family say, to see your friends and your neighbors? Amen, to see the gospel of the Lord Jesus Christ penetrate the city, this city of Toronto? Amen, one of the largest cities in the nation of Canada. Amen, amen, our nation, our people, amen. This generation is a generation that has gone away from God. Amen, amen, we need to be a people of prayer that we might pray down, amen, heaven, amen, to come right down where we are and bring about revival in our midst. We don't want to be a people that's just cruising along and taking our ease while others are astray. May God stir up our minds by way of remembrance, stir up our hearts. Brothers and sisters, as a people of God, we must be truly humble. Word of God says here, "Turn ye even to me with your hearts, with fasting, and with weeping, and with mourning, and rend your hearts and not your garments." We must be a humble people. We must be humble about, amen, our own neglect, our own shortcomings, our own failures, our turning away from God and be sorry, amen, that we have displeased Him. Maybe, amen, you haven't been really up to the bar. Amen, maybe you're just going along with the tide. Amen, but God wants us to be one hundred percent for Him. Amen. There must be an outward expression of sorrow, amen, with fastings and weepings and prayer. Amen, this speaks of, amen, the inner man, the inner man, praise the Lord. There must be a rending, amen, of our hearts, praise the Lord. Amen, a rendering of our hearts is a token of grief and sorrow, praise the Lord. Amen, the word of God makes reference to it as a broken and a contrite spirit. Amen, and God will not despise it. Praise the Lord forevermore. Amen, God requires it of all of us. Amen, that there be a deep remorse, amen, amen, and that we might surrender. And when I say we, I'm talking about us. We are the people of God. It must begin with you and I. It must begin in the house of the Lord. Praise the Lord, for, amen, judgment must begin at the house of God. Amen, there must be a stirring up. Amen. God did not want His people only just to have an outward display of repentance. Amen, but He required that there be an inner repentance. Praise the Lord. Verse eighteen. "And will the Lord be jealous for his land and piteous people." Isn't that marvelous? Isn't that marvelous? When we cry aloud unto God, how God pities His people. "Yea, the Lord will answer and say unto his people, Behold, I will send you corn and wine and oil, and ye shall be satisfied, amen, therewith." Are you satisfied with God? God is my everlasting portion, more than friend, more than life to me. He is my satisfying portion. Take God out of my life, I would be but an empty shell. And I believe you feel the same way. Praise the Lord. Verse twenty-three. "Be glad then, ye children of Zion, and rejoice in the Lord your God; for yea, given you the former rain moderately, he will cause to come down for you the rain, the former rain and the latter rain in the same month." Praise the Lord. We are living in the time of the latter rain outpouring, amen, and God is moving by His Spirit all over the earth, amen, with signs and wonders. Praise God. Verse twenty-five. "And I will restore to you the years that the locusts have eaten, amen, the caker worm and the caterpillar and the palmer worm, my great army, which I sent among you; and ye shall eat in plenty and be satisfied." Hallelujah. Oh, yes. Here we have in these verses that I just read to you an outpouring of God's mercy and God's forgiveness and God's blessings. "But this only come if the people sought, amen, God with their whole hearts, and sought Him the way that God wanted them to seek Him." Praise the Lord. "For where there is no repentance, and there is no godly sorrow, then there is no hope." Praise the Lord. This promise of forgiveness and mercy should encourage God's people to come with our whole hearts, our whole lives. Amen, amen. And tonight, brothers and sisters, let there be not one who will leave this house without kneeling in the presence of God and recommitting, rededicating, reconsecration, reconsecrating, laying your whole upon the altar of God. One more time, God, I present my body, I present my spirit, amen, I present my mind as a living sacrifice upon the altar of God. Praise the Lord forevermore. Brothers and sisters, we are living in a sinful world, a sinful society, and a sinful nation. Sin will bring God's judgment upon our nation and upon the human soul. Amen, but there is mercy with God. God's forgiveness will bring rejoicing and singing and worship and hope, amen, the hope of eternal life. Hallelujah. Amen. Do we seek to be revived? Oh, God, revive me. Oh, God, renew my spirit. Lord, even tonight, I renew my vows. I renew my consecrations. God, restore, restore unto me the joy of salvation. God, rekindle, amen, that fire, amen, that maybe I felt yesterday or yesterday, but rekindle that fire, amen, in my spirit and in my soul. Amen, when God's people seek His face with all their hearts, God promises to meet them at their deepest needs. I cannot see your heart. I cannot read your thoughts. I don't know what your needs are. You don't know what mine are. Amen, but one thing is certain, whatever our needs tonight, amen, God can come right alongside each one of us, amen, and God can meet us at that point of need. Praise the Lord forevermore. How, by loving us, amen, by forgiving, amen, by giving us, amen, a new purpose and a new reason, amen, why I can leave this church tonight and go out there and face the world tomorrow, amen, with a testimony in my heart. Amen, amen, I left the hotel tonight, amen. You know what the Bible will even, what the devil will even tell the Christians? Well, you shouldn't carry a Bible to display it for everyone to see. Amen. Well, when the Bible, when the devil whispered that in my, my ear, I says, well, I'm not gonna put my Bible in a, in a case or a briefcase, I'm gonna take it in my hand, and I'm gonna walk down that corridor, amen. If people wanna observe and see that I'm carrying the Holy Scripture, and if they have a question, I'll be able to say, hey, man, I'm a Christian, I'm saved, I'm covered by the blood. Praise the Lord forevermore. And maybe to tell them that I'm a minister, amen, and I invited the class. Praise the Lord forevermore. Amen. Revival can begin in all of our hearts, even tonight, brothers and sisters. Amen. Is there someone here who is not saved? Amen. God wants to save. Amen. If you are not sanctified, the Lord wants to sanctify you. If you have not yet been baptized with the Holy Ghost and with power, amen, God wants to do that for you. Amen. We are gonna sing a song. Brother Toby will lead us in a, in a song. Amen. And as I made reference to earlier, amen, may we all kneel in the presence of God. If you wanna come up here closer to the front and kneel, amen, we'll kneel, kneel here. If you wanna take some chairs back here and kneel up front, amen, God bless you. Amen. The ministers will kneel with you. Amen. God bless you all. Amen. Why not let us stand and sing? Amen. As we are led in a song.
We'll sing together, the chorus on hymn number fourteen, "Just as I am." And this is the single verses one, two, three, four, and I will add the grand to give us possibly.